What's going?
Going good.
That picture?
How are you?
Where'd you get it?
Well, some instructions. It's no mix.
Hmm.
Fireproof.
Oh, really? Well, I just started buying Carhartts because they have the slats in these because we use solid tape and it cracks and it doesn't stretch. The guys hate them.
So you went to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Oh, seriously?
It's no mix.
Yeah.
Kids ready?
Yep.
Everybody ready? Josh, will set. Like to call to order the normal monthly business meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District. Today is February fourteenth. It is Oregon's one hundred and sixtieth birthday of two thousand and nineteen. Let the record reflect that all directors are present. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from the board?
I move that we approve the consent.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Public comments on agenda items and from the public, we have one person to sign up. Miles, would you like to take the stand, please?
I'm Miles Schlesinger and I have been cleaning up files and looking at old papers and throwing stuff away as I move into my new place. I'm halfway through the project. But I have found in files some things that I've had on my list and I think most of them are things that should be done by our committee system. And since none of the committee chairman are here tonight, I'll wait till he schedules, they schedule meetings. But one item that I worked on for the last board was signage for the lake at the, at the north west corner of West Devils Lake Road where the sewer system is or building is. And I spoke to Ray Drayton at the direction of the previous board and I got him to say that he would probably donate the whole signage thing and put it up for us and then we could pay to put on the frontage signs, whatever we want to say. And the idea that the board had was to get, say when our jet ski races are or to say when our canoe races are and have an arrow going to West Devils Lake Road so that people can see that we have a lake when they're stopped at the traffic light. And I told Paul Robertson about this in August or July or August of his last year and he said he'd take care of it and I waited for him to bring it back to the board and he didn't bring it back. And in February, I left for Palm Springs and in March, you terminated him as a new board and Ray Drayton has never been asked about it. And I think before he dies, we should get some, something going with him so that we could have a billboard up fifty feet so it shows when you stop at the light and an arrow going and something that we can promote Devils Lake and the three things or the two, three things that are on West Devils Lake Road, Holmes Park Road, the Regatta Park, Knoll's Boat Landing.
Are you talking about the existing billboard that's there, I think that the weed shop uses now?
No, I'm talking about the other corner up behind the sewer building. They have three or four holes in the ground that they have permits that they could put up a sign.
Oh, okay. So on the east side of the highway?
On the east side of, or on the south side of the highway.
Right.
Yeah, south there.
Wasn't there a sign there before, billboard, or is there currently one? I can't recall, Miles.
There are signs there right now that are before the old art gallery that's now something else.
Insurance.
Right.
State Farm Agency. But these are poles that have never been welded to or slipped into the place so they could be provide a new sign. And it would be large enough like the other ones that you can read them, two or three lines.
So you've had, you had conversations with him?
I had a conversation with him three years ago.
Three plus years ago and he was amenable to go ahead and provide a sign or put one up?
Yes, and Paul told me that he was mad at Paul because when the Oregon or the Lincoln County Museum went into the spot and Taft, he had donated money for his raised mother's name to go on the plaque and it was left off the plaque and that kicked him off. So I think that's an issue that we should start working on so that it can help direct people to our events that we will have.
So I'm assuming what you would like us to do is make some, re-contact Ray Drayton to see if he's still amenable.
I think that's an administrative job that Josh Bernard is capable of and can do real well and make a friend out of Ray instead of a complainer.
Well, I believe that Director Sexton is also friends with Mr. Drayton and maybe could open up those lines of communication again. Could you do that, Bill?
I could, yes, I will.
Okay.
Regards to the sign at, behind the pump station.
He drove around and met me up at the place across the street and pointed them all out to me and I said that and it was about three years ago.
So are you talking about the signposts that are next to the old art studio?
Yeah, but they're a little west of that, down the slope and buried under dirt, but they're there, he told me.
All right, I'll revisit that with Ray.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thanks, Miles.
Okay, I'll take the rest of the issues up with the committee chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens present that were unable to sign up that would like to speak before the board? All right, with that, we'll go ahead with continuing board business. First up is sewer committee update.
We had, what I would say is probably our best sewer committee. Steve Brown was there, Josh was there and myself and our entire committee, plus retired city manager David Hawker, Mayor Anderson.
Kevin Shreve, Civil West.
Kevin, that did the Civil West report was in attendance.
Ed Drystat.
Ed Drystat was in attendance. Miles was there, but he's on the committee. Anyhow, great committee meeting. In a nutshell, I think that the consensus was that as it is right now, it's too expensive. And if the word were to get out to the community of what the cost was, people would just shut down when it, when it came to that. There was lots of conversation about the new and improved, for lack of a better term, septic systems that are out there and Irv Potter, who is the chairman of Benai Berth, I don't know what his official title is, but Graham Poobah, whatever. Irv has been involved with trying to get the lake sewered since, he said, nineteen seventy-nine. And he said that after reading the Civil West Report, doing the research that he's done on septic systems, that he is not convinced that searing the backside of the lake is the best environmental thing to do for Devils Lake, which I thought was interesting. So with that being said, I was trying to write down what the conclusion of that meeting was. And we talked about, you know, from here, do we, do we recommend a citizen committee move forward with forming a sewer district? Do we recommend? And my, my recollection is that Brian said he was going to come give an official report to this board. And I thought he was going to do that at this meeting, but I haven't seen the minutes from the meeting yet. So Steve and Josh, feel free to pick up.
I think you're spot on with that, Tina. I believe that they were going to round up the rest of the sewer committee members since they've been working on this program in the committee for the past couple of years and get a final report tied up to present it to the board at the next meeting. And I think Brian said he was going to shoot for this meeting, but most likely it was going to be the March meeting.
Oh, okay.
So.
Did I miss anything, Steve?
Nope.
Great. It was a great meeting, though. It was really nice to have everybody there face to face.
I think it was finally.
No, it's fine. You know, it was great because there was a lot of.
Brainstorming.
A lot of brainstorming and a lot of people there that were stakeholders and so it was at, David Hawker was really helpful in talking about what, you know, he had envisioned, but he, he made it very clear that it's a political thing and that there, you know, if it's not the will of the current city council and current city administration, then it's a moot point.
Well, at least we had the information of what.
No, it was great information.
And everything, so, great. I did read the summary that Josh gave of the, of the meeting and so, very good. Well, we'll wait to hear from Brian and his committee at the next meeting and then from the information they share with us there, we'll go ahead and give some direction as to what we should do with that committee and how we should proceed from there. Very good, all right. Special projects and events committee, Bill, are you?
Yeah, as of today, there's still no date for the sheriff to demonstrate his boat safety One of the other projects that's come up is the D River and the tidal sand. So right now, I believe Tom and Josh, I spoke briefly with Tom this week about it and trying to work up some kind of a viable solution that the state would accept for displacing some of the tidal sand in relative words or other words, but that's where we're at with that. And I guess the association had, the Neighborhood Association had a little meeting about fireworks and some of the planning that they're doing, maybe possibly with the city. That's the only thing I was updated about. So as far as new projects, there are none that I know of. The floating garden is still up and coming. The ones that I planted last fall are in the stages of starting to resprout, regrow. So that's, that was a positive move in the garden department. So I just encourage more people, if they're interested, to either get ahold of me or somebody in the district so that we can get you on a list if you want to be involved in the, the garden project. I think that's all I have at this point.
I had a couple of things. First, Josh, did, did we both get that email about fireworks permit?
Yeah, I fill that out every year, so I've got that on my.
I was looking through my emails today and saw that and I normally forward those things to you just in case and I couldn't remember if I had, so.
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure about that. The other thing I had for the, for the special projects committee was between last meeting and this meeting, I was going down East Devils Lake Road and they've done a cleanup. And so I'm just wondering if that affects your plans because they, they had a whole crew out there and I'm not sure who they were with, but.
Lincoln County prisoners.
And, and I wasn't sure, but they were cleaning up and so that was good. Good news to see and I didn't know if that affected our May cleanup or not, plans for that.
I did notice that they went to great extent, they got a lot of extra garbage that we, well, I shouldn't say we missed, but they, for some reason, it seems to congregate much more on the east side in certain spots than most other towns, spots in town. I don't know what they collected either, but I think that we should still continue on with it because I've already seen.
Yeah.
There's already a variety.
It doesn't, it doesn't take long, does it?
Sure.
Last time we did East Devils Lake Road and like a week later, there was garbage every place again, so I'm sure we'll still need it.
Okay. I just thought I'd bring that up. It was nice to see those guys out there working.
Maybe they'll follow suit, you know, when they start seeing us out there, they'll put it on their list for other projects.
Okay. Save our shoreline water quality monitoring, as far as I know, our committee chairman is not here and we have not met since then, so.
But we are having the March ninth.
Western Pond Turtle thing.
Western Farm thing, or Turtle thing.
Yeah, Susan Barnes will be down from ODFW for that. And I think Mary said there may have been another person or two to speak as well, so I've been letting everybody know at Kiwanis and all the other stuff I go to every week. So hopefully we have some good attendance. I think it's kind of a fun one for everyone, so, who doesn't like turtles?
Are you advertising that on the website, Josh, or how, how are we getting the word out on that?
You know, I'm not sure, but I'll double check and make sure it's on the website.
Okay. Well, it's ten o'clock at the community college on the ninth, correct?
Ten o'clock.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Ten AM.
Let's see, that is before our next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's on Saturday. Okay, great. Okay. Are we going to meet as a committee before then? Do you know?
I don't know. Mary hasn't said anything. I know that she's asked me to do some stuff and so I'm doing that, but she hasn't called a meeting that I know of.
All right. Well, maybe, maybe we can, if we need to get together before that, so we can do some planning for that. Okay? All right, moving on, projects and operations, Josh, I guess that's your area.
All righty. Pretty quiet this past month. Conservation Aeration Project has been humming along literally with no issue, so thanks, Bill, for getting that roof and everything on because that's made a big difference. When I go in there to do the system checks, it's a lot cleaner and we don't have any of that leaf debris building up and of course, the sound is almost nonexistent. The wind is twice as loud as that is on a, on a good day, so. We haven't had any issues in water. Bill and I went out sampling about a week or so ago and checked everything. It looks like everything's still operating fine as far as the lift of the water and everything that we're supposed to be looking for out there, so good news on that. The other end of the aeration project, Bill kind of takes care of with the shoreline aerator and right now it's still in being maintenance and we plan on getting that out to Knoll's as soon as conditions are favorable to get it out in the water again when it's safe. So then we have a couple of other locations we've discussed in previous meetings where we're going to move it around to and, and keep that thing cycling this next year, so it's been super effective for us. Keep it on the move.
Just a little question about that.
Sure.
When we went out and did the oxygen monitoring, what was the, the first couple of monitoring? What was the oxygen levels when we first started? They going up drastically or they're just?
Well, in the, in the winter, we, we have oxygen because the water is colder and denser and it just holds a lot more oxygen down there. So the issue is in the summer, when that water gets past a certain temperature threshold, it doesn't have the ability to hold as much oxygen and that's when everything bottoms out in the summer for us. So typically, it is at these levels and, and to answer your question, it's, it's very healthy. It's at about ninety-five, ninety-eight percent saturation on the bottom of the water, so you can't hope for anything better than that for dissolved oxygen reading.
Were we getting anything other than that when we first started? What are the different readings?
No, no, they're, they're pretty consistent for the winter. Everything historically that I've looked at, it tends to go back up and that's consistent with when you deploy the song with Tom as well, before I came on to take that seasonal reading and that was the same thing that it did, it was that linear curve. And I believe I, I put it down in an update a couple of weeks ago and just gave everybody that graph. I mean, it shows that direct linear correlation with the date and the temperature, so we're seeing that same thing play out and fingers crossed, of course, you know, best effort, best knowledge, we're supposed to be able to, to change that this summer, so that'll be our real test and when we're really keeping an eye on it to see in and around the aeration system if we have any dissolved oxygen in the summer whatsoever that holds because it completely disappears in the summer. So we'll be able to tell very quickly if we're making an impact, so.
Seems like we would be, I'm just, there's a lot of air coming up from the bottom.
Always, always a good thing for us right now.
Josh, in relationship to the aeration, do we have, I, I looked through all the budget stuff and I still don't see how much it's costing us.
The power bills?
Right.
I looked at them and I don't know why they're not showing up on the transaction reports. They are running between five hundred and fifty and seven hundred dollars a month, so they're averaging right about six twenty-five-ish. And of course, we only have about three months' operation on that, so it's been right where we estimated.
Is there a reason why that's not coming up on our financial report? Do you know or can you investigate that?
I do not know. I can, I can ask Teresa, yeah.
I didn't see it.
It was there last month because Teresa and I went over the power bills trying to, to put it together and it was, she was going to have to call Pacific Power because there was still some of the construction, new account information in there, in the amount, and she was going to ask them to break it out and I did see it broke out. I don't see it in this, oh.
I haven't seen it at all, at all.
It was in, it was in our stuff last month. I know that because there was.
Well, I think I asked that question last month and it wasn't there either. And so maybe that was a private meeting you had with her, but I, I haven't seen that. That's why I was wondering about it. I know that I brought that up in the last meeting.
Maybe she hasn't gotten the answer from Pacific Power yet, so she's excluded it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, I've seen the invoices from Pacific Power. I haven't seen a report from Teresa incorporating that yet, so like Tina said, maybe she just hasn't gotten it into her QuickBooks system or something yet, but I did definitely see those, that that was the charge, because I know you'd asked that question at the last board meeting.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to see what that is on a monthly basis, so.
Yeah, yeah, and there's, there's no reason why it can't be on there.
So yeah, two of them are on there.
No.
But then, yeah.
Where, where's that?
Right here, under transaction detail.
For electricity?
Yep.
So those are electrical, green light, electrical.
No, Pacific Power.
Where, oh, okay. That's connecting the power aeration.
So yeah, that, that's what I'm talking about is that she was having trouble, but there's, I mean, that one's only through August and there isn't any since August, so that is my question.
Well, the other question I had with regard to our detailed account of the cost of our aeration system is we still have a couple of green light electric charges if we look to the detail for the improvement fund. For the aeration system, we have two charges that are still sitting there that I think are connection to Vivian's that shouldn't be accounted for in that. They're on.
It says, yeah.
Seven thirty-one, both of them, green light electric, one for eight eighty-five and the other one for nineteen fifty-one, which adds up to twenty-eight thirty-six. Those should be taken out of the costs.
And so should the move aeration unit because that's for the, the airstream, correct, Bill?
Yes.
So I, I just like to get a.
So yeah, it sounds like maybe we need to sit down with Teresa and, and help her to understand what charges we want to see for the lake bottom aeration program versus other projects?
I can take care of that. See, now I need to have a meeting with her anyway.
Okay.
Because I'm going to start coding these a little, a little more accurately for her.
Right.
Just so we don't run into this.
I think that will be helpful.
So I'll, I'll just kind of, I'll come up with a system, do the same thing for the project level as well.
Yeah, because if we, I mean, if we get two or three projects going at a time, sometimes you're going to have to allocate.
Yeah.
One bill to.
Well, and what Kent's getting at on here is this puts us over budget on a couple of these invoices and we shouldn't be.
Right.
And some of this is grant funding that needs to be accounted for under those accurately, so we'll, we'll get a handle on it and.
And it could just be that the memos are incorrect.
Absolutely.
Because I know on my bookkeeping, I don't delete memos when I put a memo in for a bill and so it will continue to show up on future bills. So the charges could be correct and the memos could be wrong or she's just putting, you know, grabbing those invoices and putting them in this account when they shouldn't be.
Sure, sure. I know she's out of town at the moment. She's going to be back next week, I believe, but I'll get a meeting set up with her.
Great.
The other question I had with regard to your report was the camera at Vivian's. Are we still, we're still down to one camera? Do we have the other camera? Are we getting that up? That's been, last month, we were talking about this and I just wondered where we were.
The last camera, we're actually trying to secure another location farther on the northern part of the lake. Vivian's internet isn't holding the two cameras right now. We really don't want to take down their POS systems or cause them any ills. So we, we have the potential to be able to have the discussion, to have an internet service through Century Link, to improve the quality and availability, availability of those cameras, especially at the Vivian's location. The other site that we're looking at for the second camera would be another donated location. Jim Dewey knows somebody on the northern part of the lake that has a really good view and is willing to let us use their internet and they should have adequate internet for us and we won't have the challenges of a commercial business along with that there because it's residential property. So that way, we, we can use the camera and equipment we've already purchased, get a, probably even a better location because we'll have it on a whole nother location of the lake. So that's, that's where that second one is coming up. And we're still also looking at the weather station and everything to get down to the Vivian site or another site as well. These FTP hookups are a little bit challenging.
And then the, the compressor and everything, are we looking at putting something there too or is that kind of fallen by the wayside or not?
Bill and I have, have tried a couple of different things, like a couple of little IP tight cameras and a game cam, I think, and it's just the, the weather doesn't seem to cooperate with anything out there. It doesn't really do any good and I, I don't know what kind of luck Bill had.
Well, yeah, the only thing I, actually, the only thing my camera got was every time the wind blew, it took a picture of nothing.
Yeah, that was kind of the situation that kept happening is that it's just, there's too much around it, I think, for those motion cameras to really work. You know, we could put something like a game cam or something inside.
What's the motivation to have a camera there?
Security.
Just as additional security if someone were to break into it and try to vandalize it or, you know, take copper pipe or whatever. There's no copper pipe in it, but.
To deter people from doing that? Because you're not going to do anything by catching them on camera doing it.
Well, I think, I think it's just security for, you know, deterring people. I agree. I, I mean, I think that we've got a huge investment there. It would be, if, if it's possible, and we, we ended up with a, you know, four thousand dollar matching grant for cameras and security and we could use that.
I guess my, what are you going to do with it? Watch them vandalize? I mean, because, I mean, unless it's like, you know, next door, somebody could run there, it's kind of pointless to have it on camera that somebody's vandalizing it and, unless they have a sweatshirt or something with their name and address on it, you're not catching them from a video.
I don't know.
I mean, if it's free money, I, I guess I would be okay with it, but it's kind of, I mean, for, for an unmanned facility, if it's your home. But it's kind of, I mean, for, for an unmanned facility, if it's your home, you know, that's one thing. Because you are, maybe you're there or, you know, you have a neighbor next door. But a, a site like that, I mean, put up a dummy camera.
What about signage? And yeah, like just what you were saying, a, a dummy, some very visible dummy cameras. They're not going to review the board meeting before they go steal it. Come on, guys.
The thieves are reviewing our board meetings. But I, I mean, there's a liability that you have with that too of, of putting cameras up that you know don't work. I mean, that. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I, I guess I would ask the question of what, what's the goal and what's the motivation? Because I don't know that you're going to accomplish anything by, you could put a fifty thousand dollar camera up there.
Yeah. And, and it may, it may, the issues we're running into trying to get it by wire, to get something actually effective to a cloud, we would need something like a cell service or another internet donor, um, out there, which isn't out of the realm of possibility. But it's a little far away from most of the residential houses around there. And to the best of my knowledge, we don't know anyone that's right there that that might work for. And cell service could be kind of pricey for just that purpose.
Yeah. I, I was just bringing up the question if we were going to try to do that or, you know, how that all would work.
Yeah. And if, if I can find something as we move through and, and the grant funding and everything allows, I will definitely let everybody know and, and see what we can get put up. But the last couple of tries, it's just, nothing's really panned out to accomplish what, you know, anything that would be effective for us.
So can I make a suggestion that, and just in either a, a weekly visual inspection would be suitable for anybody's security issues? Because I'm, I'm there at least twice a week. I don't know if you're going every day.
I try to go almost every day. So at the very least, there's been.
I buy it, but I don't necessarily go and look at the little, the smaller unit there.
Yeah.
That got fluttered.
I usually go and unlock it and look inside the cabinet and see if there's any codes on the lockbox. And then that's kind of what John said to do for a basic system check. So.
Yeah. Have, have we got a, a, do you have a, a regular routine that you're checking that and everything?
I do, I do. John gave us a very good write-up. I think I, I shot that out in the email, um, a while back to everyone. And it's, it's in there. And that's what he recommends is, is daily checks on, um, you know, just checking the system, make sure it's working, no fault codes. Um, and then we'll need to start checking diffusers this summer at about the six-month mark. So Bill and I will be working on that together. But, um, the shoreline equipment's fairly low maintenance.
It seems to be.
Yeah. Well, and, and with all the extra inadequate protection that, you know, Bill and everybody's got installed around there, it's, I think it's going to hold up great for us. We're using it at, at such a low capacity for what the equipment can actually handle. And, and John has, um, said that he's done some experimenting here soon. I know he's talked with Bill about it too. Then we might even be able to save a little bit more money in electrical costs every month. So.
Cool.
So do we have a clipboard established for that building?
No. And I was going to get with you on that. I know it's really great to have the paper stuff because it's easy and quick and it's on-site. But I'll have to put it into an electronic format at some point anyway. So kind of like how we report the lake level and stuff. And Julie puts an Excel sheet. I'm thinking something like that or a shared doc or something online that you and I and/or Julie can get in and have access to. And that way we've got our, our maintenance and equipment check log.
Definitely need to have it.
Yeah. You'll know when I've been there and I'll know when you've been there and.
Might be smarter than a, than a hard copy or a clipboard by just figuring first. The daily or weekly maintenance routine is just to have somebody physically on-site that can, you know, put their initials on there.
Yeah.
So just saying you were there. But if you, we can do it e-file or however you want to do it. That's, that's.
Just hang a piece of chalk off the side and we'll, one more mark. Um, but yeah, well, I'll, I'll work with you on that, Bill. And we'll get something together so we can keep track. Because we need to, you know, for warranty and every other purpose, keep track of that anyway. So. Um, the D River, uh, and all the sand we've been having down there and storm debris has still been a big issue for us. Uh, we've met with Lincoln City Mayor Dick Anderson and with Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association to bring these people to the table and see what we can get done about this problem. Um, we're going to continue looking into some type of permitting or some kind of permission from the state, whether it's some kind of extension of our current permit, as well as some other in-water options we have right now for, for vegetation removal. So, um, I think as far as vegetation removal goes and the logs, looking at the king tides this next week, Bill?
They're, they're on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I think.
Yeah. Excuse me. So we do plan to be out there getting some of those out of the way. And of course, we, we don't know what the picture is going to look like until after then. We could end up with two or three times as many logs in there. Like last year was an absolute disaster, um, cleaning that up. So.
So, so as far as taking care of the, the, um, sandbars and stuff on, in the lake, we have a plan that we're going to move on that this, this week or this next week? Is that what you're saying? And that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. That's, that's what we plan to do while we're out there clearing some logs. We're going to see, um, you know, whatever it might take to, um, keep those channels open.
I know the river is very clear. It's, you, you see exposed, um, river rock even under kilos. Um, where you'd see for, it's as low as it can get. That's what it's telling me at least. And, um, I just, I know that we had talked about some various things where Tom called me and talked about his ideas and stuff. And I was concerned that we're going to be setting in this point in October, November next year.
No, no.
And we're not, we're not, we're not, don't have a plan to.
Yeah.
Move forward.
No, the plan will be right after the falling tide, right after the kings come to, come through. That way we won't be having that positive push from the saltwater, um, and because we want to do any of this at the same time when everything's pushing out. So we, when we drag the logs out and everything, debris flushes out along with it. Um, so that way it doesn't end up getting pushed farther back into the lake. But, um, that sounds like what we're planning on, right, Bill? That's correct.
And so if you need some volunteer work, I'm happy, I should be around next week, at least every day but Wednesday.
Bring your waiters.
I am, I'm, I've got my waiters. Yes. And so, yeah, we have some experience with that, don't we?
A little bit.
And so, yeah, I, I mean, if you need some help, um, whatever, I'm, I'm happy to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, the last thing I have for any, any more questions? Are we good? Uh, last thing I have is the water quality briefing. Bill and I briefly discussed that earlier, went out about a week ago. The clarity is outstanding and has been since, uh, early fall, um, even since that last one, uh, green bloom cleared up. But there's absolutely no hint of algae out in the water right now. Um, like I said, the clarity is all the way to bottom in almost every area. The dissolved oxygen is back on the bottom. So, um, you know, we're still in that eutrophic classification as a lake and not hyper-eutrophic. So we're still in a lot better shape than, than a lot of other lakes. Um, so it's good to see that cycle back around. So maybe we can just give a little helping hand with this aeration system this last season. And hopefully we're adding some into that right now by operating this winter as well and getting a little additional oxidation and, and push as we have all this extra water coming in right now. So let's take advantage of it.
Yeah. On Tuesday, we had just over three inches of rain and that raised the lake level. I think it's close to ten-five right now, isn't it, Bill?
Yep.
And, um, and so, yeah, that's a, that's a positive thing. The negative thing is I kept records the last three years and, and between, we are nineteen inches below, um, rainfall. We're just short of forty inches since October first. Yes.
I thought this week would change that.
Well, well, we, we actually, um, more than doubled, or we just doubled the amount of rainfall we had this month from Tuesday. Because we'd only had like three inches up till Tuesday. But, you know, the, the prediction for rain is, you know, pretty much rainy for, for a while. So I think we're going to be in good shape. And if I look at probably the next three months, we only averaged last year about under seven inches of rain a month. And so if we can stay up with that or beyond that, I think we're going to be good. Uh, at least because the previous two years, the reason why we're so far ahead or so far behind now is because two years ago in December, we had twenty-five inches in twenty-five days. Last year in November, we had twenty-five inches in twenty-five days. And so that, that's kind of the offset of where we're at. We had an extreme amount of rain in those two months over the past two years. And that put us above where we normally would be, I would think, or at least a normal year. So.
Has anybody noticed a lot of mud going into the lake? I think it was Tuesday, suddenly on Thompson Creek or, and the canal it goes into, tons of mud started going out into the lake. And now that whole side is, and I walked around up there to see if I could see if anything had caved in or anything. But it's really made it muddy.
I think it's heavy, the heavy water volume is washing.
I just didn't know if any of the creeks were, it was so sudden that it started coming, you know, into the lake.
I, I believe it was this week, wasn't it? This last week, the first week that the lake road was inundated?
Mm-hmm.
For the year. So, yeah, that kind of rainfall would definitely.
Well, and the Salmon River was, looked like a mud flow. So I don't know how high that went up.
If you figure three inches brought up the, uh, lake level almost a foot, um, just three inches of rain, it's because everything's coming draining down into the basin. Okay, let's see. Any other items that, for Josh?
I believe that's all I've got. If there's any more questions?
Okay. All right. Um, new business? Yes. Um, under new business, we have before us a, um, it's not listed in our agenda, but should be. We have come to an agreement, I trust, with, between the board and Josh as a new manager's contract. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, with that, can I hear a motion from the, the board to enter into a ma-, a district manager's contract with our manager, Josh Brainard, for the upcoming year?
Well, this is for the current year now.
Right.
So I will move that, um, that we approve the, the district manager employment agreement, um, retroactive, back to December first, 2018.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Josh, we'll initial it off and give you retroactive pay increase. All right.
I don't have insurance again. I was kidding.
Insurance is good. That stuff.
Do you need me to get ahold of Teresa to make the adjustment?
Um, I can probably do that because I've got to call her in and have a meeting anyway, take care of these other items. So, um, I'll, she might get ahold of you for authorization after I get her all set up. Um, should be back next week. So.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience.
Yes.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other new business items from the board? Um, on agenda items from the board? I had a couple. Um, one was, uh, our agen-, a, the agenda change. I don't really like it. In all honesty, I, I know that that was brought up a couple, uh, meetings ago that we should make some changes. And, um, there were some potential agendas that came to each of the board members, I think, two, two months ago. And we didn't act on them because Steve wasn't here the, during that time. And, um, and I, I just, I don't like this new agenda. Um, we, I think we're looking for something that has some action items in it so that we don't lose track of things. And I don't see that this does that at all.
If I could make a comment. Uh, so Josh and I, I was in his office, uh, yesterday. And we kind of worked with the agenda. I, I, I believe that that's the intent of the board is to keep a, a list of action items. What we really need to do is to get it down to one page. And, uh, I felt after our discussion yesterday, Josh, that, uh, maybe we could send the board out, um, a maybe revision, uh, per our conversation.
Sure.
On how it would work. Um, you know, anytime you, you make a change like this, uh, it's, uh, everybody has a, an opinion, you know, on, on the visual of it. And I think the intent is, is to get a, get a working piece of paper that evolves with every month. Things drop off, things are added. And, um, I think it's going to take a couple of times for us to work with it and discuss it as a board. Um, and cleaning it up too. With the Roman numerals on the side, I know we were, uh, talking about that in Josh's office. For me, that's just confusing.
I hate Roman numerals.
Yeah. And so, uh, you know, one thing, uh, Josh had sent out those templates, uh, to the board. And I know I responded to it. Uh, I don't know if anybody else did.
It didn't come up for some reason. So I didn't see it.
I didn't respond to it. I, I came to the December meeting or previous meeting with some things that I liked. I, I could see us moving some things around. There's some items that would help achieve what we're looking for, what you were looking for. Um, but this certainly doesn't do it.
Right. Uh, well, first attempt to, um, so.
I think the staff report is way better.
Yeah. I, I think my, uh, my suggestion would be is we're working in the right direction. Now we drop off all those other examples and we work on this document. And, you know, maybe even the board could give recommendations. If you're working at, in your business with something that works for you, uh, shoot just a, a rough outline to, uh, to Josh. And, um, I think it's going to be a work in progress, but I think it's great we're talking about it.
Okay. Yeah. You know, an example of something that's dropped off is the Devil's Lake Plan. That's been on, all of a sudden it disappeared. And, you know, um, Tom worked hard on that. We put it on our website. We asked for comments. We were supposed to either adopt it or not adopt it in December. It's February. It hasn't shown up at all. And so it's been forgotten. It hasn't been forgotten by me. I know that, um, it's something that we need to address. I, I believe we can address it in our next meeting. Um, so everybody can have a chance to do that. I, I don't know if we've received any comment at all from that.
Or has he been commenting on it to date?
And so, I mean, there's an example of something that, hey, we put a lot of work into.
Right.
Um, it needs to be addressed.
Right.
Okay. Um, that, that brings up another issue that I, um, that's been brought to my attention by several people. And that's our website. I think our website needs work. Um, it's hard to find stuff. Some things aren't showing up and we just, either we need to get Jimmy in there or Josh in there to try to make it more user-friendly. Um, wouldn't you agree with that? I don't know.
I mean, yes and no. Uh, I'm, I'm with Steve on that. Everybody has an opinion on, on what works for them and how they want to see it. Um, I mean, if you have suggestions for it, I can certainly get those in a template and I can have a meeting with Jim and see what it would cost to get those things taken care of.
Well, an example would be, I, I don't think there's emails for either of you two. I don't believe there's emails.
That's great. I already manage four or five accounts.
And so, I mean, there's some things that need to be addressed that, uh, it was, you know, we didn't have our meet, our meeting minutes and agendas and stuff for a long time. I brought that up several months ago. That's been addressed. But I mean, it, it, it's our main communication tool. And, uh, I know that this is winter time. And, um, winter's the time nobody looks at it. But coming up here in a few months, that's when people start looking for information that, that's important to them to come and visit the lake, either if they're residents or just visitors. And so, um, I think we need to put some time.
Well, I'm a true fan. First of all, you know, websites can become, uh, maintenance nightmares, number one. And very expensive to maintenance it. Um, one of the first things that should be real obvious is a comments area. If you're hearing things out in public, um, if they are trying to get on it, the first thing that they should be able to push a button on is to give a comment about what they couldn't get to.
Right. Right.
You know, that's invaluable, um, as far as cleaning up a website. Which I don't believe we have a comments section on the website, uh, so.
There's, there's, there's a contact us button on the front page.
Contact us, comments, CEO.
Yeah, it, it goes straight to the lake manager email, but I, I never receive comments on the website, other than people trying to get us to buy SEO services.
Well, if we're hearing this, I guess, you know, uh, we can add something to get the feedback.
I think it's important though, and I hate to interject here, but I, we're going through this internally in our company. Comments of the website needs work are completely useless.
That doesn't help anything.
Because it is probably a hundred and fifty-page-plus documents. And so if there is something specific that somebody tells you or tells you, then that's useful. But it has to be communicated very specifically because, you know, I don't like the website. I, those are useless comments.
Well.
From us or from citizens.
Two of our board members is.
Well, so that's a specific thing. Have you told anybody that?
I just found out about it as I walked in the meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, those are, are specific things that should be communicated to Jimmy. I mean, I'm trying to get on it right now and I can't, so, I mean, those, those are easy, but, you know.
Yeah, it has to be specific though, you're right.
Right.
I mean, I don't like this page is, well, I mean, how much do you want to spend? Two hundred or three thousand? But yeah, if, if someone shoots me an email or text or whatever, hey, I can't open the minutes from October of 2017, they're broke or something. That's something I can specifically look at.
Before, because I've been looking for documents on the site and, you know, I was used to the way it was. And I don't mess, I honestly don't mess with our site a whole lot, but I did need that document. And I was able to get it right away and it was just in a different place than what I was used to looking at it. But, I mean, that's just an ongoing thing.
There's always going to be artifacts.
I mean, our website, we, you know, we're very confident in the people that we hired to build it. They do tons of websites and I, my husband more so than me, but it's daily. We find things that either we don't like, it doesn't work, it, you know, and you just have to keep shooting them off and stay on top of it.
It takes time. Um, other.
So let me get clarified here, does that mean that we have to have Jimmy redo it? Or are we not?
No, I'm just saying that we need to.
Yeah, if there are basic, small things like that that needs updates, just get ahold of me directly, like not having Kathy and Steve's, you know, let me know. That's something I can fix in a couple minutes. Um, you know, if it's something like we need to rebuild, and I'm, I'm aware, I would really like to do something with our meetings. And the way they are, they're just big and clunky and it takes up too much space the way it is. And it worked in the old website, but like Tina said, it doesn't work so on the new one. So I'd like to get something a little more like Lincoln City set up where it's a, a more compressed list and, and easily findable. So there, there are definitely some things on the wish list, I know what you're talking about, for sure, on some of those. Um, but the little stuff for sure, get ahold of me directly. Um, and I can get emails posted and information changed and, and basic stuff like that right away.
Yeah.
So is that what it is about the website that you're questioning?
No, there, I, I mean, I've had a general con, con, I've had two different comments from citizens. Um, one, just as I walked in, I got a, a text from somebody.
About not being able to get into it?
Not being able to email.
Find any.
Two of them.
Oh.
Yeah, Kathy and Steve's emails are not on.
And then, uh, you know, just in general, I had a conversation with another, um, individual that said, hey, you know, we need to work on our website. And I've, I've, oh, you know, we, we went into changing it years ago. And, um, I still find it difficult too, myself. And I don't know, maybe we just need to look at it again.
What are you not finding?
Well, I can't.
Or how to navigate through the website?
Well, yeah, I find it difficult to navigate through myself.
Well, I'm just asking because I don't.
Because you never have accessed it? I thought so, all right. Um, any other non-agenda items? I had one other, one thing. We need to schedule, uh, an executive session with our manager for our quarterly review.
Oh, wow.
It seems like it's, um, we, between now and next meeting, and I know Steve's going to.
Yeah, well, probably a good time to discuss this too. Uh, I know that we, uh, once we entered into an agreement with Josh, that, that first year, we felt it was, uh, invaluable for the success and the communication of the needs on both sides that we have quarterly meetings. Um, I would really like to see that cut back to a biannual, uh, this next year, if the, uh, board would consider it. I feel the meetings that we've had in the past quarterly and the progress that we have seen, um, and I think the open feedback with Josh, uh, I think it would be better to do it biannually. I'd like the board to consider it.
Well, in my opinion, um, and when I was talking, uh, with George Dunkel from the SDAO, our insurer, um, he was happy that we're meeting as often as we do with our manager. He said that really helps keep everybody on, um, the same page, so to speak. And things that may be a, or could potentially become a problem, get taken care of early in the process. So I, I, I mean, I really enjoy having those quarterly meetings myself. So I, 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 I think every six months is probably not often enough myself.
I would be in favor of biannual, but I talk to Josh on a regular basis. So as far as in, in actual evaluation, I think biannual is more than enough for, after you've got out of your probationary period.
How are you feeling, Josh? I know when we talked about it before, after the first year, you'd said that you kind of enjoyed meeting with everybody each quarter, so.
I do, but I, I feel sometimes it becomes cumbersome because it's difficult for everyone traveling to get together for the extra quarterly meetings. And that's only came up to be more of an issue recently because we've had so many other meetings on account of sewer and projects and everything else, that it's been difficult to line everyone up to do these. And I, I'm, I don't know, I, I feel like I have pretty open communication with the board. Try to be approachable at all times, so if there's anything, you know, just let me know immediately and we'll get it taken care of right away. If it's something that's within my, my power to do.
Bill?
I'll, I'll stand behind the biannual because I do talk to Josh a lot and I, I don't, I don't feel like I have any restrictions when we communicate. So I'm, I mean, we have an open channel. And if there's anything that needs to be decided on amongst the board, then, yeah, we could get that dealt with in a biannual.
So every six months then? Move to six months? It looks like we have three people that are willing to do that, so let's.
I mean, you can, we can always have an executive session if something comes up, but.
Yeah, I, I just really liked those meetings. I think we accomplished a lot. And I think it was, it was often enough that we were able to kind of all keep in the same direction. But if the, if the majority of the board doesn't want to do that, then that's fine too.
I, not for the purpose of reviewing, Josh, I guess is my point. If, if you want to have, you know.
I think it was our time.
Board retreat meetings or, or whatever, you know, that, that you don't think we can accomplish either here in our different committee meetings, uh, that, that's a different story. But for the pure sake of, of, uh, an employee review, I think it's too frequent.
Well, none of those reviews were really, were at all meant to be, um, financial or, you know, in, in nature at all, they were just communication, I think. So that was my take on why we did those things. So.
We're going to biannual?
Is that, is that what you, you're, is that what you're in favor of, Bill, moving to biannual every six months?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
And so Tina's in favor of that?
Right.
And so is Steve?
And there's nothing in, in the employment agreement that states a schedule, right?
No.
That I recall?
I don't, I don't recall.
Says from time to time or something along those lines.
I don't recall anything in the new employment agreement. I don't recall anything in the new employment agreement at all.
Um, sorry, I'm just reviewing super quickly, just in case we are going against something that we just changed.
I don't, I don't believe that was part of it.
Okay.
I don't think it was, I.
I guess if it was, we can reverse ourselves.
Scratch that, reverse that.
Right, or make an a changement to the, um, employment agreement, either one. We can make an addendum. So if we find that, Josh, if you see that that's part of this, then we can make an addendum to that.
Sure, uh, would you like to have the first one in June or?
Well, that would be May, I think.
May, from December to May then?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we want to start probably our second meeting, um, so we're not so late on this.
Gotcha.
Uh, start doing that in October.
Okay.
So that this is valid as of December first, that's what I would like anyhow.
Yeah, this should never, we should never be in the rears like this with an employment agreement.
That's not fair.
That's not fair to anybody. So we're, we apologize.
So let's do April and October?
April, October.
Is that, I mean, that's six months apart.
I think it would align, you know, perfectly, actually.
Okay, okay.
So do we want to just set those since, um, I mean, we could do it for the, for the sake of people that are traveling more often and stuff? Do, do we want to, um, huh, speaking of that, April and May, it's unlikely I'm going to be here.
No.
Um, actually, maybe just April. April for sure, I will not be here. And I don't know. No, no, just for our April meeting, sorry, the April eleventh board meeting, I will not be here. I'm here Friday and Wednesday, just not Thursday evening.
Okay.
But I could meet for, um, a morning executive session if we wanted to do it on the same day as the board meeting. Or we can do it a different day, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, we've got next month, we can think about our schedules as we move forward. And, but in general, we'll look for an April and October meetings for executive sessions for, um, kind of a, our conversational review like we have in the past.
I'll get it.
Sound good to everybody?
Send an email out to everybody then, here, and?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do that.
Glad that came up because I remembered the other day that.
Um, let's see if I had something else here. I think those were the items I had.
We're on schedule for the, the budget calendar?
Uh, correct, we are going to, I'm going to make a small revision to it. Uh, we're going to appoint the budget committee members at the next board meeting where we're going to do it this one. I'm waiting to see a couple of the incumbents want to stay on, but they're out of town right now. And I wanted to give an extra couple of weeks just to have that out if anyone else wants to apply, so, yeah. But we are on schedule. Uh, financial review, I also forgot to mention, is almost complete from Grimstat. Um, Teresa had to get an extension on it because something didn't get put in in time. Not a big deal, so that'll be up here very shortly as well, and I'll get that out to the board.
Thank you.
Well, didn't I sign something already?
Yeah, that was the, that was the, just the agreement that it's done. They haven't given me the final, final copy with the signatures and, uh, the, everything in it. Um, and, and we had mentioned that it was just a couple of things. Um, the only issues in that were payroll tax or a payroll overage, just because we made a change in the budget last year to the budget this year to take the intern pay and put it straight into hourly instead of separate it out. So somehow that did not line up correctly, but it'll be remedied in the next budget.
As, as a side note, since you brought that up, do we, are we actively looking for an intern right now? Is that?
I have two applicants at the moment, and I hope to have them both in next week for an interview, so.
Great, great. Okay.
One OCC and one OSU, so we'll see.
Very good, yeah. Yeah, before, before we know it, it'll be summer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what happened last year.
It's already mid-February.
Time to start collecting bottles again.
Right. Okay, any other non-agenda items from the board? Additional comments from citizens present? Anybody out there want to give any comments? No? Additional comments from the board?
People?
Sir.
We are Jaren, thank you for coming.
On Valentine's Day.
Oh, yeah, happy Valentine's.
Oregon's birthday, one sixty.
Sixty years old.
Yep.
That's what we used to always.
Yeah, I guess, um, we didn't get hit on the south shore again at all. Um, I guess it's raining today and, um, it's supposed to rain for the next couple of days.
Where'd you wear a coat?
Yeah, I was looking at pictures of, um, Kilauea. It's bad.